I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular board meeting, September 4, 2007. The time is approximately 5:30 PM, 1900 Price Road. Moving on to items two and three, please rise for a moment of silence, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands with one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored there Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation under God.
Thank you very much. I think we still need to practice the Texas pledge ever since it's been changed. Moving on to item four, roll call. For the record, Mrs. Galván may be coming in late, and Mr. Colunga is not here, and I didn't hear from him. I don't know if he'll be showing up momentarily or not. Moving on to item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of September 4, 2007, with any corrections or deletions, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Doctor Escovedo, members of the board. We do have, I am deleting one agenda item, or two agenda items, under closed meeting, Level 3 Board Grievance and Reviews. Item eight and nine will not be addressed tonight. That's items eight and nine. Also, in closed meeting, personnel matters. On item number 35, page 212 will be replaced with page 212A, and 212B, and 212C. I think you all have received that already. And then, item number 38, page 228 will be replaced with page 228A, 228B, 228C, and will be added to the agenda backup.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. To have a motion to approve the, a motion by Mr. Parrish, sent in by Mr. Cortez, on favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six, Superintendent's Report, A Conference Presentation, One, Recognition of 2007 BISD Exemplary and Recognized Campuses, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Doctor Escovedo, members of the board. It is with great pleasure that we introduce this agenda item. We have 27 total recognized or exemplary schools, four are exemplary, 23 are recognized campuses. This is, we did outstanding when we look at ourselves compared to Region 1. We are definitely, definitely, one of the better districts in Region 1. We had great results this year. I'm very proud of our staff, very proud of our principals, but most of all, I'm very proud of the students for their accomplishments. They did a great job. And it's a lot of pleasure to bring them tonight, introduce them to you. These campuses have done great, great work. And, you know, I'm going to especially announce that the Hannah High School, which is a very large high school, is just one, the only 5A school in South Texas, Region 1, Region 2 or 3, that has been recognized. All the other ones are small, 1A or 2A high schools. Hannah High School is, deserves a big congratulations, because they're a big, big high school, and they were recognized, and the only ones in South Texas. So I want to extend that congratulations to them, as well as to the exemplary campuses and all the recognized campuses we have. They're great numbers, but we will take the time to recognize each and every one of them. So at this time, before I introduce this presentation, that will be introduced by Ms. Ayala, I would ask the board to step down inside the inner circle, so we can, when they're presented, we can take pictures with the students and the staff.
Ms. Ayala?
Mr. Escovedo, President of the Board, Mr. Gonzalez, Superintendent of Schools, and members of the board. At this time, it is my honor to have Ms. Sharon Moore, Secondary Administrator, and B. Garcia, Elementary Administrator, present the recognized and exemplary campuses. Ms. Moore?
Doctor Escovedo, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board. I would like for you to step to the semicircle to present flags and plaques to our exemplary and recognized campus. We're very proud of our elementary campuses and their dedication to student excellence. BISD surpassed all Cameron County School Districts in number of exemplary schools, and in all Region 1 school districts except one. This is a moment for celebration and an opportunity to take pictures. In order for an elementary campus to achieve exemplary accountability rating, the campus is required to have 90% passing rate for all students in reading, writing, mathematics, and science, for all applicable subpopulation. Special education students who took the state-developed Alternative Assessment also needed to achieve 90% or higher passing rate. Each elementary campus is represented by the principal, a teacher, parent, and a student. I would like to take this opportunity to first introduce our elementary exemplary campuses. From the Hannah Cluster, Egley Elementary, Principal Christina Bridgewater, Area Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Pace Cluster, Garden Park Elementary. Victor Caballero, present principal. Carlos Garza, principal. Area Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Congratulations.
Our next recognized campus, Rivera Cluster, Gonzalez Elementary. Yolanda Kruger, principal. Tim Snyder, principal. Area Assistant Superintendent Mary Jo Monfile.
Hey, Tim. Congratulations, sir. Hi, Ollie. How you doing? Good to see you.
Good job. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Hannah Cluster, recognized campus Hudson Elementary. Dr. Rita Hernandez, principal. Area Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations. Yeah, Rita. Like always.
Porter Cluster, Longoria Elementary. Principal Marina Flores, Area Assistant Superintendent Rachel Ayala.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Pace Cluster, Martin Elementary. Gilda Jo Benya, principal. Area Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations. Very good. Congratulations. Congratulations, young man. Congratulations, young man. Congratulations.
I called them, so they should have been here by now.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to, I wanted to get to the...
You may go get something upstairs. But upstairs or in the public...
Lopez Cluster, Morningside Elementary. Dolores Emerson, principal. Area Assistant Superintendent Mary Jo Monfile.
Congratulations. 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 Hey, Lolita. How are you? Congratulations. I'm doing fine. How's everybody?
Our next recognized campus, Pace Cluster. Ortiz Elementary. Sandra Lopez, principal. Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations, young man. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, guys. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Porter Cluster, recognized campus Skinner Elementary. Principal Kim Moore, Area Assistant Superintendent Rachel Ayala.
Congratulations, young man. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Kim, good job, sir.
Lopez Cluster, Southmost Elementary. Principal Jimmy Haynes, Area Assistant Superintendent Mary Jo Monfile.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Jimmy, good job, sir.
Hannah Cluster, recognized campus Victoria Heights Elementary. Michael Moreno, principal. Blanca Lambardi, principal. Area Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. 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 Good job, sir.
Oh, she is. Okay. She's still unemployed. She just don't leave. But she is here, so I don't want to forget her.
Thank you.
Pace Cluster, recognized campus Iturria Elementary. Principal Norma Linda Gallegos. Present Principal Norma Torres. Area Assistant Superintendent Brett Springston.
Congratulations. 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 Good job. Congratulations, young man. Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations, man. Good job.
This concludes my presentation. Congratulations again to all of the schools and their academic achievements. We continue with our middle schools and high schools. Sharon Moore. It's now my privilege to continue this presentation by recognizing the six secondary campuses that earned a recognized rating from the Texas Education Agency. At the secondary level, to achieve the recognized rating, a campus must have a 75% passing rate for all students in reading, English Language Arts, writing, mathematics, social studies, and science for all applicable sub-populations. Special Ed students who took the state-developed Alternative Assessment, or the SDAA, also needed to achieve a 70% or higher passing rate. The first secondary school to be recognized is Hannah High School. And although Mr. Gonzalez has already spoken to you about Hannah High School, I think this bears repeating. It is important to realize that there are only three high schools in all of Region One to earn the recognized rating. And even more cause for BIHT to celebrate is the fact that Hannah High School was the only 5A high school in Region One and Cameron County to earn this rating. Congratulations to Hannah High School, and I'd like to present them to you at this time. Hannah High School is, the present principal is Terry Alacone. The 2006-2007 principal, Yolanda Kruger. The area assistant superintendent, Mr. Brett Springston.
Got it, Ollie.
the Porter Cluster, Cummings Middle School. And congratulations to Jennifer Gonzalez, the present principal; Dora Sausada, the 2006-2007 principal; area assistant superintendent, Ms. Rachel Ayala. Our next recognized middle school comes to us from the Lopez Cluster, Lucio Middle School. And I'd like to present to you Rosie Longoria, the principal, and the area assistant superintendent, Mary Jo Monfile.
Congratulations, Hannah. How you doing? Congratulations. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
From the Hannah Cluster, our next recognized middle school is Oliveta Middle School. Alonso Borbosa Jr., present principal. Robert Gonzalez, 2006-2007 principal. Area Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Brett Springston. Our next middle school comes from the Pace Cluster, Stell Middle School. Acacia Emile, principal. Mr. Brett Springston, area assistant superintendent.
Congratulations. 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 Acacia, good job, as usual.
Our final middle school comes from the Pace Cluster, Vela Middle School. Acacia Emilio, principal, Mr. Brett Springston, area assistant superintendent. School. Robert Gonzalez, present principal, Sylvia Centeno, 2006-2007 principal, Mr. Brett Springston, area assistant superintendent. But I think it's real important that we stop and note this important fact. Since 2004, when the new state accountability system was implemented, BISD has more than doubled the number of exemplary and recognized campuses. Congratulations to everyone involved in this wonderful achievement. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moore. Counselor, we're gonna have to take a break. We lost our quorum here. Let's take about a five-minute break. The board reconvenes after a very brief five-minute break. Just to follow up and finish off item one on the conference presentation, I just want to congratulate all the campuses. It brings great pride to me, as I'm sure it does to you too, that in all of Region One, which is essentially the entire valley from Brownsville up to about Loteda or so, right? That we are perhaps the best district. So I just want to congratulate all the students, teachers, parent professionals, principals, parents, and everybody that's involved. You continue to make this district proud. Any other comments on item one? Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, and I agree with you. It makes the board very proud. But I also want to thank all the principals that, as we were going around visiting the campuses, even though they were not recognized, the other campuses where you could see the energy, the enthusiasm for the incoming year. And I think this is gonna help us because, like Mr. Gonzalez said, we're gonna double that number of recognized schools next year. And I think that our principals are in a good start with that energy they express with go-by visiting. It's an indication they're gonna have a better year.
I agree. Any other? Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Dr. Escobedo. I want to echo my colleague sentiments and Mr. Gonzalez. We're very proud of the twenty-seven schools, but we're also proud of all the schools. And to be one of the number-one district in South Texas Region One, all you can do is pat yourself on the back, teachers, classified employees, administration, and once again, we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anybody else? Mr. Gonzalez?
I want to just say congratulations to everybody that's involved, especially the students, parents. Board members, I want to congratulate you for all your support. It cannot be done without your support, and of course, the public support. And we look forward to getting more campuses. We have a bigger challenge next year, getting more campuses recognized and exemplary. And I think every principal, every student, every parent is up for the challenge, and we look forward to working toward that goal. And in doing so, we add staff sometimes to help us out. And I'd like to introduce at this time, if I may, to the board and to the public, our new assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, Dr. Salvador Cabasos.
Mr. Cortez?
Thanks, Dr. Escobedo. I just also wanted to congratulate all the campuses that were exemplary and recognized, although all of those that, like Mr. Aguilar said, when we went out and visited those other campuses that didn't get recognized status, there was a lot of energy in those rooms, and those teachers and the administrators are ready. And we're looking forward to good things this year, and I just wanted to wish everybody a great year. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. And welcome, Dr. Cabasos. I'm sure you're gonna have your hands full, as you've probably already sensed. Welcome. We're here to help each other for the benefit of the district. Welcome, that's all I can say. Mr. Aguilar?
President, we put him in the hot seat. We said we're gonna double. So you might laugh him today, but the expectation's a lot higher.
Well, he's in the hot seat.
Welcome to the district, sir.
But there's several hot seats in this area, and I think, and they're all occupied. Okay, moving on to item two, is a public hearing for the proposed tax rate fiscal year 2007 and 2008. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. As you well know, it's- we must have a public hearing to discuss the tax rate. We have very good news about the tax rate to all the general public. Our tax rate's gonna drop immensely. This is an effort to reduce the tax burden on the local taxpayer. Cooperation within the district and the state to do this. And I would like for the board president to call for a public hearing and let then administration do its presentation on the proposed tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Well, at this time, I would like to call for the public hearing.
Now, public hearing is now open. Mr. Sanchez will do his presentation on behalf of administration. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, President Escobedo, board members. It's- I didn't realize the order of this thing, you know, after you recognize all these campuses, and then you gotta turn around and talk to the taxpayers about taxes. I don't think it's gonna be a topic that's gonna be on a high priority list. But nevertheless, let me proceed. First thing to remember is, instead of the tax rate, now with the new law, you have to first establish what is the rollback amount or dollars that we need to look at. And that is based on a whole series of computations and tax values and so forth. So according with the help of the county, as they're doing our collections, we were able to determine that that rollback would be $1.094997. And that's because we have a newspaper gentleman here that wants to get that number, and I want to make sure he gets it, and I'm gonna repeat it again. And the rollback number is $1.094997. That's the cap. We cannot adopt a tax rate higher than that. So what did we do? We're going to come to you and propose to adopt a tax rate. Listen to this one from the newspaper man over there. Two one-thousandths of a penny lower than that. Two one-thousandths of a penny. So that our new proposed tax rate is going to be 1.0923, just two thousandth of a penny below that. The reason for that is, if we adopted a rate higher than the rollback, we would have to have an election. The taxpayers would have to approve any tax rate above that. All right. That's the total tax rate. It has two components. It has an MNO site, which is the dollar amounts that we can use to operate the district, and the other side is called the INS Interest and Sinking Fund, which is the dollar- you have to be very precise here. You have to have enough percentage there to collect enough dollars to pay all our general obligation bonds outstanding to the penny. So we have to collect, when we get our tax rate of a dollar nine, we have to specify how much of that amount is going to go to our Interest and Sinking Fund. Well, last year, the board approved to us and gave us those four golden pennies, which we did not budget, which we used this year to give raises to all the deserving teachers and is represented by the twenty-something schools that we got recognized, and then on all the other staff members. So this year, the law said you've gotta reduce it on the first year, Sternbeck is zero, 2005, 2006, reduce your tax rate on the MNO site to eighty-eight percent. Then this year, we got to reduce it to sixty-six percent. So we basically wind up, if we follow the letter of the law, we wind up at about ninety-six cents on the MNO site. But you all approved four pennies, so it kinda raises it up to about ninety-nine cents. And so on the other side, we had to have a Interest Sinking Fund amount of about nine pennies and some change there. But you know, we said, you know, the legislature has allowed districts, just like we did the year before with the four pennies and brought us some additional funding. We can lower our tax rate, and then if we move some pennies from the INS side, which is two pennies that we're asking you to move, from the Interest and Sinking Fund area, say, well, if I move those pennies over to the MNO side, the maintenance and operation, aren't we going to be short and not being able to meet the obligations? No, because Brownsville, again, is very fortunate that we have what is called excess collections, that we can go there and take that difference and make it up, bring those two pennies over on the MNO side, and we project that we would get an additional revenue somewhere in the neighborhood between four, maybe four and a half, hopefully five million dollars, depends on the tax properties. So we're saying, what do we want to do? Well, we want to go back, and at the ninety-nine cents, we want to add another two pennies on the MNO side to would be a dollar one, and then we're going to go ahead and have about seven pennies on the INS side for a total of one dollar and nine pennies total. And by moving those two pennies and being able to make them up from our fund balance excess collections on the INS side, that fund balance that I'm talking about on what we call the Interest and Sinking Fund cannot be used for anything else other than to pay general obligation. We can't take it and use it for salaries. We can't take it in uses to build buildings. It has to be there by law. So our proposal is that in total is, let's approve a $1.0923 total tax rate, of which $1.0191 is the MNO site, and on the Interest and Sinking Fund, it's .0732. That's a lot of numbers, a lot of decimals, a lot of math there. But that's basically what we have in terms of presenting what- where we're at with our tax rate. And we have a significant reduction. In the notice that we printed out in the newspaper, the average household here taxable value is about between fifty-five, fifty-nine thousand dollars. So by the reduction of the tax rate, taxpayers are gonna save on the average of about a hundred and thirty-two dollars in taxes per year. This one dollar and nine cents is for every one hundred dollar valuation of property. We'll open it now to questions. Is there any other comments, or?
Mr. Sanchez, would you mind telling us what the total tax rate was last year?
The total tax rate last year was one- I've got it right here. Hold on.
Four zero fifty-four.
Right. One point four oh fifty-four, yes.
A dollar and forty cents. So we've actually brought it down approximately thirty-one cents.
Thirty-one cents, per hundred valuation.
Per hundred. That's a great, significant tax reduction for the taxpayers of Brownsville and the pin school district. I want to make sure that people understand they were reducing it by over thirty cents per hundred dollar valuation.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Escobedo. Also, if you look at the total picture in '05-'06, it was a dollar forty-eight fifty-six. In two years, we've dropped it point three nine- thirty-nine cents, point thirty-three. So, you know, it's- everybody's in a win-win situation. We still- we didn't lose any funding. The funding's still there for us, the golden pennies we had last year. So I'm excited that we have dropped this year thirty-one cents, point thirty-one. That was- it's something what the state did. Thank you.
I agree. You know, I feel very fortunate, I think. Administration, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Gonzalez, and the rest of the team have done a great job in maintaining good fiscal responsibility. Of course, by no means does that mean that we're gonna slack off a little bit. It just means that we're gonna continue with our- being frugal with our finances. Any other comments from the board? Mr. Gonzalez? Okay. At this time, I would like to invite anybody from the public to come and express their opinion regarding the tax- the tax issue. Okay, for the second time, because I do have to keep tally, I would like to invite anybody from the public to come and express publicly their opinion regarding our tax bracket. Please state your name for the record and-
Name's Mr. De Leon. As a taxpayer, it's the best news I've heard in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. De Leon. Anybody else from the public? Please state your name for the record and express your opinion.
Orlando Carlos Trevino, for President, administrators and everybody. What can I say? Pretty soon, maybe we won't have a tax rate. But you all are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Trevino. And for the last time, will anybody from the public like to express your opinion pertaining to the tax rate? If not, then I close- I would like to close the public audience for the proposed tax rate fiscal year 2007, 2008. Anything else on this item?
Close the public hearing?
Okay, I would like to also completely close the public hearing pertaining to the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 2007, 2008. Thank you very much, and again, congratulations to all of staff that were involved in this. Moving on to item three, presentation of Lincoln Park School Swimming Pool. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo, members of the board. We just wanted to bring forth this information item to the board because there's some discussion concerning the pool at Lincoln Park. As you well know, we built a brand-new, state-of-the-art addition to the Aquatic Center for special education students, and those students that are in need, special needs of a swimming pool. We spent pretty close to two million dollars on that facility. We have fixed the building at Lincoln Park, but the swimming pool now looks like it needs to be closed because of the condition that it's in. And I'd like to ask Mr. Sanchez to add to that, because he's done a study out there along with Mr. Tapia and the structural engineers concerning the pool. Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, board members. I think we can narrow the thing down to about three points. One is, we actually went in and spent about three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars because the steel members that hold the second floor are- that swimming pool is in the basement, and so we had to do some work there to the tune of three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And basically, the chlorine that you put into the swimming pool, as it evaporates, I think is causing some of those members to weaken. And so it's a safety issue. The next thing is, and I spoke to Mr. Fruia, Sam Fruia, who is in charge of Aquatic Center, what happens on a rainy day, and he has told me that basically when it rains, a lot of the mud and water seeps in there. He spends a whole week, and his personnel, cleaning it up and then getting it ready for use again. He spends a whole week, uh, and his, and his, and his personnel cleaning it up and, and then getting it ready, uh, for use again. Uh, and then, of course, if, uh, if we, we, we install it again and, and, and put all this equipment, then we may have the same recurring thing with, with the steel members and steel structure. Because it's a good facility, the facility itself, the buildings. But we've invested in, uh, an awful lot of money in the, in the brand-new, uh, aquatic pool. And I asked him, do you have a schedule for all the campuses to bring, especially the special ed, so they're not isolated over there? Yes, I do. So there's bus routes set up and every, everything is set up so that they can be bused from their campuses onto our new facility.
Questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. If, uh, no further questions, we move on to item four. Presentation of notification of Betterment Fund change orders. The HVAC upgrades district-wide face two, the high school kitchen renovations, and the Lincoln Park structural repairs. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar. Uh, this are the, the change orders to the Betterment Fund. Contingency Fund has nothing to do with change orders to the contracts. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, we move on to item five. Presentation of school bus purchases. Mr. Gonzalez.
Um, thank you, Dr. Escobar. As, as we all know, uh, the board was to approve the budget and which means we, we buy buses that we, like we normally do. And one of the things we like to do is to make a presentation to y'all, telling you how many buses we're gonna buy and, and what our plan is, like we normally do at the beginning of every year concerning school buses. And that I call on Ms. Fox for the presentation. Ms. Fox.
Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Escobar, members of the board. The agenda item to present to you, the bus purchases that we propose for this year. On page thirty-three, you will see the rotation plan and how we determine rotating buses. The bus, current bus inventory is there, one hundred and eighty-seven regular ed buses, one hundred and two special needs buses, five band buses, for a total of two hundred and ninety-four buses in our fleet. Page thirty-four then has our proposed purchases, fourteen total buses, eight forty-seven passenger buses for special needs with wheelchair lifts, one seventy-seven passenger special needs bus with wheelchair lift, and five regular seventy-seven passenger buses. We propose to buy those fourteen buses that were approved in this year's budget. Any further questions?
Questions, comments from the board? Layman.
Uh, the, the total amount of buses then is, uh, actually, uh, not three hundred and fifty like we were led to believe, uh, by our counterparts, uh, at the city that, uh, during the hurricane, we only have two hundred and ninety-four buses.
That is correct. And when they, when they did ask me how many buses we had, it told them we had a.
They wanted our three hundred and fifty buses that we didn't have.
That we didn't have. We only have two hundred and ninety, uh.
Of which.
Uh, some are special needs buses and others are, one hundred and eighty-seven are regular buses.
So for the record, we've separated seventy-five buses that could actually do the work, okay? For the record.
And for the record also, uh, not to offend anybody in the city or anything, but, uh, we've been, when there's a hurricane, the county judge is the one we're cooperating with as far as the, the calling for the buses. So when we talked to, when we talked to, to, to the county as far as releasing our buses and letting them use the buses, because that's who we coordinate with concerning the needs of buses for, uh, emergencies such as hurricanes.
And that is by law, by policy or?
That is the direction we get from the governor's office to work with the highest ranking county official to be able to do this. And this is what we do. This is the, the instructions we have received.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other comments from the board? If not, we move on to, uh, item number six.
Before we move on.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make it very clear to the board that we are going to go ahead and purchase the buses. An agenda item will not be forthcoming to the board to approve. We will be using the cooperative that we have from the state by board that gives us the best value for the buses already. We already know that they're the best ones. They, they, they solicit, uh, bids throughout to get the best values for every district cause they, they buy in volumes for the whole state of Texas, not just for Brownsville ISD. And it's a very specialized area, so I wanna let everybody know that we are going to continue the purchase of the buses and will not be coming back to the board for approval.
Mr. Powers.
Yeah, thank you, President Escobar, for, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. Also, during the budget process, we did do an item that said we were gonna buy the buses. So thankfully, we already voted for it.
That is correct.
Thank you.
This is just a presentation for you all and for the general public.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any other comments, questions from the board? If not, we move on to item six.
Mr. President, uh, with your permission, sir, I'll, uh, I'm going to recuse myself from this next item and go to the audience.
Thank you, Mr. Saldana. Uh, moving on to item six, presentation on selection of board attorney. And Mr. Saldana has, has left his seat and is going into, into the audience. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Escobar. As, as you well know, there were three board members here for the presentation of the workshop for the selection of a, of an attorney. Mr. Saldana's contract is up, uh, and it basically expires on September ninth. Uh, with that in mind, we solicited proposals to get new attorneys for the district. Uh, Mr. Saldana is no longer involved in the, putting in a, a proposal by himself. He has joined another group. And with that in mind, we have to select a new attorney probably tonight. Unless we, we don't, then we have to have a special call board meeting to be able to select an attorney by the ninth because his contract or allow administration to go on a month-to-month basis with Mr. Saldana. And that, that would have to be worked out with the new firm that he's with. Uh, the persons that put in for a proposal were Mr. Jim Solis, uh, Reifton, Razor, Vickery, and Williams, Thornton, Machine, Segato, Reynolds, and Guerra, and Walsh, Anderson, Brown, Schultz, and Aldrich. Uh, these were the four, uh, firms that put in as of their proposals. They all did a presentation. I think it was, uh, three board members that were here. There was, uh, Mr. Layman, you were here, Mr. Aguilar, and Mr. Cortez. They all heard the presentations. The rest of you did not hear the presentations, but you were afforded a, a CD where you can hear the conversations that were going on. You were also afforded the, uh, the, the, the brochures that were handed out, the resumes that were handed out by each one. Uh, at this time, I would say that if any board member wishes to ask questions of, to any of the board members that were here or to myself before they make a final decision tonight on a action item that we have, that we go ahead and, and entertain any questions or, or if any board member that was here wants to make a presentation themselves, they may do so because this is an important thing. Board president asked me, do, would you have a recommendation? No, I will not have a recommendation because this is an item that, that's not allowed a superintendent to recommend because the attorney will represent the board, not administration. So it's very clear that, that, that the only one, there's two people that, that the board can hire. As a superintendent, which you have done a great job in doing. And the other is the attorney, and I assume you will do a great job there also. So, uh, I'll turn it over to, to, to you, Dr. Escobar, and to anybody else on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Uh, you know, for, I had a prior, a prior engagement. I was not able to attend that workshop, but I did review all of the material thoroughly, the experience, the resumes, the, the firms. So I, I feel that, uh, that I'm ready to, to make a decision tonight. Uh, then, Mr. Layman.
Uh, I, Mr. Powers called me to go ahead and chair the, uh, since you were not gonna be also there at the meeting, um, when we interviewed the, uh, four candidates for, um, possible, uh, legal services. And it was just as a courtesy to, to bring this to the board members or to the agenda as a conference presentation just to give those that were not there the, uh, privilege and the exercise their ability to even ask any comments or, or questions. And so that, that was the only reason. So, uh, I too, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm ready to go and vote. And I don't know how the other, uh, board members have any other questions. And that was just the, the reason why this item was brought, uh, in this format.
Thank you, Mr. Layman, Mr. Powers, President Escobar. Uh, I did listen to the CD ROM and, and I did look at the four presentations. So, um, I apologize for not being there, but the CD ROM is just like being there. So, uh, I'm also ready to vote on an attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Mr. Cortez?
Um, I was there at the meeting and, uh, the four firms did a good job in presenting. Uh, but one of the, one of the questions that I have or concerns, and I guess it's appropriate to bring it up here, is, um, that this is a board attorney and that we need to emphasize that to administration so that you guys can open up the position that you have for in-house attorney. That we don't need to utilize the board attorney for administrative function so that we can clarify what the role of that attorney is. Uh, uh, and I, I as well, I'm ready to vote on this thing tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar. Well, I'm also ready to vote and, excuse me. As we look at this attorney, oh, we're good, except there's someone that has more resources than others. And we need to look at which is the best one. And, uh, I think we have, I have the confidence we're gonna select a good, uh, firm. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Just a question.
Dr. Escobar, uh, on, for those that were present at the workshop, uh, what did you consider the most important, uh, selection criteria for the board attorney? In, uh, in either of the, the questions that were asked or the, uh, the, uh, the views that were expressed, uh, throughout the, uh, discussion. What, what, what did you consider most important from your point of view?
Would anybody like to answer that?
Well, I, I chaired the, the meeting. There was only three of us. Uh, I don't know if you received the, uh, the, the CD ROM, you know. Uh, that, that's self-explanatory as, as to your question. But, uh, I think Mr. Cortez had some valid questions. Uh, I think you, you, he cross-examined most, uh, most of the night. Um, I think, uh, Mr. Aguilar really, uh, put it in perspective that, um, uh, I believe that there were two firms, in my opinion, that were outstanding as far as qualifications, able to undertake the needs of, of a district this size. And, uh, we, I personally narrowed them to two, and then I think Mr. Aguilar also concurred. Uh, Mr. Cortez had, uh, other viewpoints, and I think, uh, we are, we're along the same lines. So once again, the information that was afforded to you, uh, in abstention, uh, you, I, I think we're all ready to make, uh, decisions based on that criteria that was presented.
Yeah, I, even though I wasn't there, but to answer your question, if I was, my, my concern was and remains knowledge and experience in school law. Any other comments or anyone else like to, Mr. Aguilar?
Oh, basically, that's what we were asking is, who was familiar with school law, there are many issues, not just contracts. And so definitely, being that we're, have so many issues from special ed to ESLs, uh, personnels, and of course, personnel issues, that we wanted to have a, a firm that would be able to handle all these issues in case of, of lawsuits. And of course, also, we're concerned about contract. What is a turnover? If I have a question, how long would it take for you to answer those questions? And there were some of them that could, within eight hours. There were some within three hours. Now, because they, some of them have the personnel to deal with specific contracts and, and the turnaround is very quickly and the expertise would be here immediately. So definitely, there were, uh, out of those four, there were two firms that express, uh, that would look real good.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, that was, Mr. Colunga, uh, that was one of the things that we did consider, uh, the resources that that firm could provide to this district. Uh, you know, as we get bigger and we're only growing in size, uh, this school district needs to have an, an attorney that at moment's notice can provide us with information from grievance to, you know, student discipline to contracts and everything. And, and we looked at all that, and, and there were a, a couple of firms that stood out above the rest, uh, in, in regards to, to that area. So.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, to hire, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself here. I, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Apology accepted.
We're ready, doctor.
I apologize. Okay, uh, moving on to item seven, board calendars. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Escobar, members of the board. As we say, we provide you a, a calendar for your information. There's a couple of items that, that, that are not there that I want you to add to your calendars, even though we will be reminding you of those in the very near future. Uh, my secretary, my staff, has emailed you all saying that we must have a board training on legislative update. That is a requirement of law. And that will occur on the twentieth of September. It'll be at Harlingen and it'll be at six P.M. And there will, Region One will provide you with that. If you do not get this training, you're going to have to go get it somewhere. It's a requirement of law. You have to have the training. So please, uh, make arrangements to be there. Uh, you know, we can get a suburban if y'all wanna ride together and come back. However you wanna do it, please inform me. We'll, we'll, we'll find your way to get you to Harlingen and, and bring you back. Uh, but you need to have this training. It is required of law. I know Mr. Layman will probably not be here that day. I don't know if he'll be here back on the twentieth or not, uh, September. But you will have to get training somewhere else on legislative issues. But the rest of the board needs to go to that, so I remind you of that. The other thing is that on the twenty-seventh, most of you will be flying out to Dallas to go to the, uh, T A S B, T A S A, uh, State Conference, which is a very important conference for all board members and, and top administrators to attend. You will be there on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and returning back on the thirtieth. We've made all the arrangements, uh, flight arrangements have been made. Uh, if you're going, not being, be able to attend for whatever reason, please let us know as soon as possible. But I want to let, uh, the public know also, this is, this is a state convention that's also almost mandated for board members to go to get their training updated. You will have to have certain hours of training every year in order to, to keep your position. So this is an excellent opportunity to get the training that is required by law for you to get. Uh, the other things that are there, uh, just wanted to, to, to mention that there are, of course, numerous meetings that we're having on administration, just for y'all to know. And if you are ever interested in attending any of our meetings or dropping by, please do so. We don't mind board members coming in and sitting in and enjoying our meetings because it may, it may be something that you will learn what administration is doing and where, where we're going. So that's, that's very important, uh. We do have a, also on the twentieth, on the morning, a welcome back district parent meeting at nine thirty A.M. at the Brownsville Event Center. Please mark it on your calendar. It's really enjoyable. I address this. We have keynote speakers. And it's something that I would, if you can, as a board member, be able to make, please do so. It's at nine thirty, and we, uh, also invite all the parents in the district to be there. Uh, we also have a BISD college night on the twenty-sixth at six thirty P.M. at the Brownsville Event Center. Uh, if anybody's interested, that, that, this is a very important meeting for parents for college. Get information about colleges and financial aid and so everything that goes on. So those are the highlights that we have. Uh, please read through the entire, uh, and if you have any questions, please let me know and I'll be glad to visit with you on any particular event that might be going on.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Powers?
Yes, President Escobar. I'd like to have an insurance meeting to go over the, uh, deductible, the co-pays and the plan itself with the employees and, uh, committee before it goes into effect October first. That way we can decide if there's any areas we can benefit the employees. So if, I know we leave on the twenty-seventh, and I know, uh, the best times, we can do it either on the, um, on a Monday, I think, no, Colunga can't do it on Monday. Thursday, right?
Uh, we can do that on, uh.
Thirteenth.
On the thirteenth, if you so desire.
Yeah, let's do it on the thirteenth, five thirty. And, um, send out a, uh, information to the employees committee, insurance committee. That way they can bring the Q and A's to you guys, what they are looking for into the plan. That way we have an idea what people are looking at.
Sure.
All right, a survey type thing. Thank you.
Uh, I also wanna mention one other thing, if I may, Dr. Escobar. On the eleventh, there's a very important meeting in Harlingen. As you well know, the state has mandated that students have college readiness starting in two thousand and eleven with the new testing that we're going to be having for high school students. The testing is going to be, we will no longer start in two thousand and eleven, have text testing for high school students. We will go to end of course exams. In so doing, the state is deciding a definition of college readiness and being able to incorporate that by, by the two thousand and eleven school year. They have set up different committee meetings throughout the state to do this and to get input from the public, and they will be publicized. As your superintendent, I will be there giving testimony, asking questions and presenting in behalf of Region One superintendents. So I will be there. It'll be at nine thirty in the morning. If you have time to go by, please do so. If anybody in the general public wants to go by and see what's going on and what the state is doing in deciding college readiness, I invite you to go there. It's very important for the future of our students and it's very important for the future of BISD. So I will be there and I will be presenting testimony in behalf of the district and in behalf of our students. And it's on the eleventh at nine thirty A.M. in Harlingen at the Administrative Building on, uh, Seventy-Seventh Sunshine Strip.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Anything else on the calendar? Questions, comments? If not, then we move on to items. If not, then we move on to item seven, the public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is time for citizen staff, for students, to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other parts of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you wish your comments to be present, to present your comments. To have your comments heard without your name in the subject matter of your comments must appear in the sign-in sheet, which is located in the... Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments, and with all due courtesy, I would strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an officer or employee, I will interrupt you and ask you to stop, and direct you to proceed with the BISD formal's grieving procedure, be that DGBA, FNG, and GF Local. With those cautions in mind, we will not be glad to hear your general comments. Remember, you have five minutes to present, and I will reiterate my caution in asking you to refrain from mentioning people's names and/or companies' or vendors' names. The first speaker is Tony Science. The subject is support.
Mr. Gonzalez, Doctor Scuero, and distinguished board members, good afternoon. My name's Tony Science, and today, I'm not here to complain about anything. My sole purpose to be in front of the board today is public display of support for my wife, Sonia Science, whom we will be discussing in a closed meeting later on this afternoon.
Sir, please let's not mention any names, sir, for the third or fourth time.
Mr. President.
Counselor?
Sir, based on the usual preamble that you read, comments regarding termination of the employment may be inappropriate at this time for the board to consider or to have. They're part of the legal prohibition that you read prior to all public audiences.
So, what are you suggesting? Are you suggesting that he not continue his...
Yes, sir.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry, sir, but because of the items that we have, we're gonna ask you not to speak of the topic at which you had intended to. I will offer the opportunity to use this five minutes for something else?
Yeah, he can do that.
Other than the personnel issue, Mr.?
Starting termination of employment, that is right out of the comment and preamble that you read to the public audience.
I understand. Would you like your time for something else, another topic, sir?
Mr. Saldana, I never said anything about termination of anybody.
Okay, I think we need to move on.
Came to support. That's all I did.
I'm sorry, Mr. Science, but we're gonna have to move on.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Our next speaker is Clay, I can't tell if it's Simmons or Timmons. Timmons. The subject is approval of medical health plan, and please, sir, let's not mention any names.
Superintendent Gonzalez, Doctor Scuero, members of the board. For clarification, do you want to, would you like me to refrain from representing the company that I'm with?
Counselor?
He can, if he wants to, as long as his comments are, you know, general in nature.
No, nothing specific to proposals, Mr. Timmons?
Okay. I think I'll just refrain and forego my five minutes then.
Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Alberto Alegría. Thanks to employees, transportation, time, and insurance. A lot of, a lot of subjects.
Does that mean I have fifteen minutes?
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Five minutes, Mr. Gonzalez. Good evening, members of the board, President Scuero, Superintendent Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alberto Alegría, the proud president of the Association of Brownsville Educators, and honorably representing twenty-six hundred members in the Brownsville Independent School District. Our association is affiliated with the Texas State Teachers Association and the National Education Association, three point two million members. Tonight, I would like to thank all the men and women that made possible the smooth transition of the new and promising school year. Special recognition goes to maintenance, food service, transportation departments. Without these individuals' efforts and professionalism, our accomplishments wouldn't be possible. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, thank you for a job well done. As we embark on a new school year, we thank central administration and our school board for engaging in positive and constructive manner with the Association of Brownsville Educators. This type of performance, without any doubt, will translate to future positive dialogues as we pursue better salaries, better benefits, safe and respectable working conditions for the benefit of our educational institution, an institution second to none. Tonight, we ask of this administration and the school board members to pledge to all BISD employees the responsibility of due process, fairness, and respectability in the workplace, for this body has the final word in their employment. Our first-year teachers need the opportunity to become the effective, highly qualified teacher they can be. We ask campus administrators to demonstrate patience and work diligently with this population of employees. Give them the opportunity to flourish and succeed for you, once we're given that opportunity. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, will continue to safeguard all the employees' rights and their self-respect to assure equal opportunity and fair treatment in the workplace. A content and secure employee makes a great blend for a successful campus, department, or office. We must continue to work together for the success of our employees and the children we teach. Transportation concern. Presently, when the BISD, presently, when a BISD bus driver is involved in a bus accident, the first course of the investigation is to drug test the driver. The driver is placed on a non-driving position until the results are known from the lab, and there lies the problem. In some occasion, as many as five days go by before the results are given, and the driver plays back on his route. The employee is compensated during this non-driving suspension. We are not challenging that aspect of the policy. What we are concerned and have a legitimate issue with is the loss of employees' extra trips, which equate to overtime pay. According to our information, in the last two years, no BISD driver has tested positive for drugs after a bus accident. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, feel that the policy needs to be revisited and revised so that the drug test is expedited in a timely fashion, and the driver not be inconvenienced monetarily. We firmly believe that all precautions and proper procedures be taken when dealing with the safety of our children. However, lab work should be processed within twenty-four hours timeframe, allowing the employee, if tested negative, to be back to his or her extra trip rotation. We hope to work with the administration and school board members to find a solution to this issue. BISD employees' insurance. I have followed this process since the beginning, and I believe that the board has done a great job of stepping up, of stepping back and allowing administration and the consultant, who we are paying twenty-five thousand dollars to do their job. What I have witnessed has been a fair process. I can't recall a time when the board hasn't followed a recommendation of the administration and the consultant. It is also my understanding that the majority of the board members voted for the current consultant. I've attended all the meetings and have seen the presentations, and in my mind, AAG clearly brought the best program to improve the health care of the Brownsville Independent School District employees. If the board votes to rescind regarding AAG, the employees of BISD will lose increased discounts, free flu shots, free smoking cessation program, and a scholarship for one of our students. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, hope you'll let the consultant recommendations stand and allow AAG to do their job. Last but not least, we, the Association of Brownsville Educators, would also like to congratulate all recognized and exemplary campuses, a true indication that the educational cycle is alive and well. We thank the parents, teachers, and administration, and administrators, and the students. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Alegría. Our last speaker is Orlando Carlos Trevino, general and newspaper articles.
My name is Orlando Carlos Trevino, Mr. Board President, Doctor Scuero, board members, administration, and public. The reason I put article, because I saw it three days in a row, right here. To me, I will tell you one thing. I have always stated that I believe in the employees, I believe in administration, I believe in the board members. These are facts. You got insurance committee, you got a consultant, as Mr. Alegría was stating, you got an administration, you got a superintendent, and you got board members. The fact is this, gentlemen, that the board, when they, when they, when the superintendent, Hector Gonzalez, brings up a recommendation, which was brought on by a consultant and everything, that everybody approved, the board is not there to change his recommendation unless there is something wrong. You all, each one of you, it was a six to one vote. The fact is, if you all decide to change, any of you decide to change your vote, take a look at the city. They tried to do it with a construction job. Boy, the people that tried to change it stepped backwards. Why? Because it's not only illegal, it's unethical. Once a contract is issued, approved by not only the board and administration, it's gotta go forward. Fact is, the people that lost the contract need to go back, do their homework, and come the following year, present a better proposal. Everybody had the same information, everybody had the same statistics and everything else. They had a good ride for seven years. Now, somebody else's time to take over. But the fact is, I believe in the insurance committee, I believe in the administration, I believe in the consultant, I believe in the superintendent, and I believe in this board. I will wait just to see on this item, because I don't think anybody on that board wants to jeopardize the school district or themselves in any type of investigation or lawsuit. That's all I have to say, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. That concludes the public audience. Moving on to item eight, closed meeting. The item was pooled, so we move on to item nine, consent agenda. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is a need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. So, we will discuss item number ten, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, and forty-three. So, that would be ten, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, and forty-three. I will now entertain a motion, well, yeah, well, forty-four, yeah. I will now entertain a motion to approve the recommendation of administration, uh, agenda of these items. A motion by Mr. Aguilar, taken by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Abstentions? Mr. Cortez, well, yeah, you made a motion. Motion passed unanimously. Uh, moving on to item ten, discussion, consideration, and possible action to rescind prior board action of August twenty-one, two thousand and seven, agenda item number sixty-three, approving TPA for medical health plan. Just for the sake of the audience that's viewing us on television, Mr. Gonzalez, this was not your item?
Doctor Scuero, members of the board, no, this is not an item that I put in. This is at the request of a board member.
Okay, it's a request of Mr. Ruben Cortez. Uh, Mr. Cortez, why would you like this item discussed or rescinded?
Well, one of the, in a conversation that I'd had with Mr. Gonzalez after we approved this, and I'm not sure, I understand that our consultant did make this statement that night, but maybe I was thinking about free flu shot or something. I kind of overlooked it when he said, "We trust our vendors to give us accurate data." And I took great concern with that, because, you know, we're talking about a thirty-plus million dollar contract for healthcare, and I would have liked to have known that they had verified the discounts, for the sake of this school district, to know that when we go into this contract with this firm that was awarded this project, this contract, that we know good and well that those discounts had been verified. And so, in talking to Mr. Gonzalez, he was gonna attempt to get them. I know we had talked about it, I guess, into Tuesday or Wednesday, and he was gonna try to see if he can get those to all the board members, so that we can see and verify that those discounts, in fact, were in place. And unfortunately, he wasn't able to get them, and to this day, I yet to see that they've been verified, and that's really the big concern that I have with this item, that, you know, we're not talking about a couple hundred dollars here, we're talking about tens of millions that the district budgets for this item, and knowing what the discounts are and being verified is something that, unfortunately, I overlooked at the time that we voted, and I prompted this item in hopes of being able to verify it prior. And in my discussion with the superintendent, you know, I told him if we're able to verify this, you know, before the noon deadline on Friday, I'd gladly pull the item. Unfortunately, they haven't been verified to this day, and I guess, I don't know, Mr. Gonzalez, if you've been able to get any information you can provide to the board members as of now, that could at least give us some indication that, you know, the consultant was able to verify the discounts, or that they were forwarded over to you for your review, so that at least we can come by your office and have taken a look at that, and just verified through yourself, the consultant, or something that we can look at.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Doctor Scuero, members of the board. Mr. Cortez is making it oversimplified. We did have that conversation, and said, you know, it's something, and I've emailed every board member, and I can prove it through emails, that we did ask the consultant concerning the proprietary nature. They cannot be done, not only theirs, but anybody's that's there. We'd be here forever trying to get proprietary contracts. Those are not eligible, and I think all of you got the email. To be able to say, "Mr. Gonzalez did not provide them," I did provide you an answer, maybe not a satisfactory answer, but I did provide you an answer, through the consultants, that they're proprietary in nature, and they cannot be discussed. The main thing that we can do, and we've done this, and we've discussed it with Mr. Saldana, and he's here today, is that everything that those consultants were given by the presenters, by the persons that did this, are to be included in the contract, to be verified through the contracts, and to be monitored through the contract. And the most important part of this is, they're all proprietary in nature, Mr. Cortez. I mean, you can ask forever and a day, and everybody will tell you they're proprietary in nature. They're not gonna give them up. They're trade secrets. They're not gonna be handing them out so everybody compared to can get them. However, we do do this, like we do everything else, is we include them in the contract, whereby audits can be done to verify as being done. This is the purpose of the contract. I know that Mike has worked on this, and we even visited this afternoon. The contracts are basically ready to go. And with your permission, Doctor Scuero, I would like to ask Mr. Saldana to provide this board with what it takes for a contract to be executed, and what is being put into this contract, if that's okay?
Sure. Mr. Saldana?
Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. President, members of the board. Basically, what I've done, and I provided my final draft of my recommendations on the contract today to Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Gonzalez, and Mr. Whittemore. Additionally, I also copied the consultants. They seem all to be satisfied with, and we're gonna hopefully have a sit-down face-to-face with A and G, this new group here, hopefully as soon as tomorrow. I have included some recommendations, some that came directly from administration regarding the term of the contract, regarding the ability to withdraw from the contract. We have been, Mr. Gonzalez is very clear, in a couple of the areas there, as to what he wanted in terms of maintaining flexibility for the district to be able to exit the contract with relatively no cause if we're not satisfied with the vendor. In addition to that, one of the other things that administration indicated was that they wanted access to our information, specifically actuarial data, and other accounting data that would be required for us to conduct our own audits for several reasons. Number one, to monitor the performance of the plan and of the TPA in executing and administrating the plan. And number two, to, in order for Mr. Sanchez's office to comply with all of the audits that are, we're required to conduct of our own, especially our external audit, in which we have to provide this information to the external auditors that come in and basically review the books and... that come in and basically review the books and give you all ultimately the findings as to the financial status of the district. In addition to that, I have included various other protections for the district. Some of the items that were mentioned by various board members, which the TPA indicated that they would do, I've included in the contract, including the flu shot program, the scholarship program, the smoke cessation program, the direct contracting ability. I've included that in the contract because a couple of board members had indicated that they wished the plan to maintain the flexibility to direct contract with local providers. So that has been included. I can't think of some of the other ones. Oh, the guaranteed administrative fee for three years was not included in the contract. They did promise it out in open session, so I included that in the contract. That means that the administrative fees cannot change should the district choose to renew the contract annually, that those will be guaranteed for three years. A couple of the other ones were highly technical legal issues regarding indemnification and arbitration that were removed from the contract. Maintaining our ability to apply Texas law, and if we have to litigate anything, it will be done here in Cameron County. So those were the major protections that I put in. I have not gotten any feedback from them yet. Hopefully, I'll do that tomorrow.
Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, Dr. Scuado, thank you. Mr. Zaldanian, because we haven't seen these contracts, and we know that you go to great lengths to protect the district in those contracts. Is there gonna be any language in there that guarantees the discounts?
Yes, I included that language in there. As a matter of fact, just today, in my meeting with Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Sanchez, we included two sets of information there that they reasonably guaranteed that their repricing discounts are accurate. And number two, they also have some additional performance standards that they put in there that they guarantee regarding the accuracy of their claims adjustment or their claims management or claims administration. And it's a very high one, it's in the vicinity of ninety-nine percent that they're guaranteeing. And also in their claims payment, which is something that is important to maintain good relations with the medical community. They've guaranteed that the average claim will be turned around and paid in ten days in addition to the discount and guarantee that I've asked to be put in the contract.
And the other question I have is with regard to Mr. Gonzalez's comment about this contract being proprietary in nature. If the firms, if the firm, when they gave their presentation, told us what their discount is already, and then they went back and said, I think it was, what, thirteen percent more, whatever the additional discount was on top of that. If they're already telling us what the discount is, what would be the difference with someone from this administration going to their office to at least verify it or having had the consultant verify it? I don't think that I was being unreasonable and necessarily saying, "Send us your contract." I simply wanted them to be verified. Would that still be something that would be going into that realm of the proprietary documents? I mean, I get it, they wanna protect whatever vendor they do business with, provider or such, and they don't wanna make it public record once it gets here. But could it still have been verified by the consultant?
Mr. Cortez, that really is not a legal question, okay? I am not an insurance consultant. That would be a question that, in my opinion, would be better answered by the consultant in terms of industry, custom, and practice. I don't have the answer. I do know that certain private entities are very cautious about releasing information of a proprietary nature because we are a public institution. Once it comes into our auspices, although we can protect it to a certain degree, we are subject to the Public Information Act. And therefore, could subject us to having to release the information sometimes. Though there are exceptions to the Public Information Act, that being one of them. But in answer as to what is the usual custom and practice in how these discounts are verified and how they're not verified, that's out of my area of expertise.
I don't believe that was my specific question. If they're claiming that this is a proprietary document, I get that. They don't wanna make that document public record. I totally understand and respect that. But having the resources that this school district has, I understand that when they hired Mr. Sanchez, they hired him because of his ability to be a CFO and because of his understanding of the world of insurance. I mean, it could have been just as simple as maybe sending somebody like Mr. Sanchez down to verify or having the consultant gone and done that. Is that...
It could very well have been, Mr. Cortez.
And that was my question. Is that something that would still be out of this proprietary realm with the TPA? Or the network involved?
Mr. Cortez, I'm out of my area of expertise at this point in time. I don't know how it is that exactly that they function. A lot of it would be discretionary. If the particular vendor or PPO is willing to share it, they may want it to. I have no argument with your point. It's a good point. Don't get me wrong, sir. If you have verified a situation, that's always better for the district. But you're asking me about custom and practice in an industry that I'm not familiar with, sir. So I really don't know what they would be or would be not willing to share with the administration. Could it have been done? Probably yes, if it had been pushed a little bit harder, perhaps that could have been done. But I'm not qualified, sir, to comment on that issue.
Let me just make sure I understand, Mr. Cortez. You agree and you like the numbers and the presentations and everything involved with this issue, but you simply questioned the integrity of the consultant as to the validity of those numbers, is that right?
I questioned the accuracy of that discount that we're being told because it has not been verified.
You think they're lying to us?
On what?
Do you think they're lying to us?
I simply like confirmation that they are accurate. And yes, to answer your first question, yes, I did like what that company had to offer. And that's why, when I was sitting with the superintendent, I said, "Man, you know, maybe I was too busy thinking about how wonderful it is that they're gonna offer flu shots to all the employees that I overlooked." Or I didn't hear when he made that comment. Otherwise, I would have asked this question then as opposed to now. And maybe we would have been able to get somewhere before. It wouldn't have had to get to this.
Well, a lot of the information that we receive for virtually every item, I guess we kinda have to trust that the information we're getting is true. But I guess we all have different levels of trustworthiness, I guess. I know that from looking at all the emails that have been going back and forth, the consultant remains adamant and firm on his recommendation. The superintendent remains adamant and firm on your recommendation. And I have seen nothing from legal counsel that says to the contrary either. So the only one here that really is the person that's doubting this, I believe, is the person that placed this agenda item, which is Mr. Cortez. You know, I don't think if we keep discussing, we're gonna really get anything, any new information. Do you still want this item placed? Do you not want it? Do you wanna rescind it? What do you wanna do?
Well, I'd like to know if, and I, you know, they're in the room. We got an email that they were gonna be here. I mean, if it's something that they're gonna guarantee the discount, I mean, that's never even been tossed back and forth in any of the emails, that the company is willing to stand by by that discount. And that was really all that this was about, Dr. Scuado. And I'm sure that all of us here wanna make sure that we're getting the best deal for the school district. We all have the school district's best interest at heart. And knowing is better than not knowing. And if at least the firm gave the guarantee that they're gonna stand by the level of discount, it would make me feel so much better knowing that we're getting, you know, a fantastic deal. Because their presentation was a great presentation. There's no...
Just out of curiosity, what background do you have in insurance? I mean, you seem to understand it real well, I mean, a lot better than I do. What background do you have in insurance?
Well, if you must know, I...
I'm just curious, I mean, I...
I actually used to have a local recording agent's license several years ago. And so I've actually taken the state test on insurance. And I was, at one point, temporarily certified by the State Board of Insurance. And so I have a little bit of background in it. And, you know, this is something that is extremely important. And I'm sure that we all wanna make sure that the district gets the best deal and that it's a verified best deal. I mean, because on presentation, they obviously blew everybody else out of the water. But on discounts, can we verify them or can we get them to guarantee them? Was my issue, my only issue.
And for the record, Mrs. Lavon, welcome. She's just joining us. We're on item ten. Essentially, what I've done is asked Mr. Cortez why he wants this item rescinded. And that's where we are right now. I guess, Mr. Gonzalez, counselor, it would be inappropriate to ask the consultant to speak unless the item is rescinded, correct? I mean, at this point, we really cannot address the consultant because the item is not rescinded.
It's up to you, Mr. Dr. Scuado.
I think with this in mind, I mean, there's been a lot said. Mr. Lehman?
I have one comment to follow up on Mr. Cortez's. This is addressed to the counselor since he's reviewing the contract. The issue that I have with the PBM counselor, that you review that...
That was the other thing that I included in the contract. Yes, sir. The hundred percent rebates on any discounts or rebates that they would receive on their prescription. We'll come back, either in the form of direct payment or credit to administrative fees.
That's in the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. That's all.
Contract's getting better. Mr. Gonzalez, anything else at this point?
Dr. Scuado, like I said, I really didn't put this agenda item, but I'm listening to Mr. Cortez. And to me, everything, regardless of what anybody says, anybody can say any numbers they want, I guess. We have to, I talked to the consultant, and basically, they say, "This is the process we use, you all saw the email," his answer, about the process, that they believe in the process, and they're going to go with the process, and that they remain with the process. I'm not an expert. I don't have an insurance license, I have nothing. I'm a superintendent of schools. I know education pretty well, and it's proven today by the number of schools that were recognized and exemplary. That's my area of expertise. I hire a consultant to be able to give us what I think would be the best value for the district. That's all I can do. I look to them for guidance. You say, "Do you remain adamant?" As long as the consultant says this is the best value for the district, then that's what I gotta go with. I can't be switching back and forth. I gotta rely on them. They're the experts. We've paid twenty-five thousand dollars for them to give us expertise on this. I rely on counsel to have an airtight contract. I rely on counsel to put in there that everything that was put forth by the vendor that was awarded the contract is adhered to and that we have the ability to verify as we go through, through audits. I would never, never tell this board to let them run for a year without an audit. We have to audit their numbers on a regular basis. And if you put everything in the contract, that's better than their word. You're tying them into a contract. So to me, to answer Mr. Cortez's question, to a certain extent, to me, it's the consultant saying that he believes in the process and the process was done right. Secondly, believing in my attorney that represents the district and the best interest of the district to have an airtight contract whereby this will be adhered to. I did put one thing in the contract, that's the only thing that I really, because I'm not an expert, was, "Give me a ninety-day out if it's not going well." Give me a ninety-day out. Because why a ninety-day out? It's very simple. I talked to Mr. Sanchez. How long would it take me to put a new proposal out there to get in and be awarded by? Because I can't just give it to somebody else. I would have to go out for bids again. So he said, "Ninety days will take care of it. Give me a ninety-day out." I didn't want to tie myself on a sixty-day out and then be without insurance. Give me a ninety-day out. If we come in here and we find out through audits, they're not adhering to any of this thing, let's go into litigation and find out. In the meantime, let's give them notice of their contract being canceled, and we go out for bids again.
Mr. Lehman? Just on a different caveat, counselor, last year, we operated without a contract, so this year, we might have a contract.
I'm hoping, sir, with all my might.
Mr. Powers?
Let me, I think for this agenda item, as the insurance chairperson, you know, Kalunga and I have been here ten years. I've always supported the insurance consultant recommendation. It was done fair and impartial. And by the way, Ruben, I have the license for twenty-five years in Group One. The one you said is P and C license. But other than that, we do have to trust Mr. Gibbs, who did a thorough presentation. And when I called the insurance meeting to have a presentation done, I'm glad Mr. Gonzalez accepted the recommendation to have a presentation by all three vendors. Discounts are very important. And based on what I'm hearing from Mr. Zaldanian, we're gonna have a concrete contract, which we didn't have before. Matter of fact, I will compliment Mr. Maniol. He's the one who said, "Let's do an audit on our insurance." I'll compliment him. Him and Mr. Lehman led that charge to find out what our contracts and what our discounts were truly worth. Then we find out on the PBM, we weren't getting our money. I didn't know that. And I apologize. I thought we were getting our money. Now we're getting a hundred percent. So that is something we found during the audit. The prior company came back and said, "Hey, we'll give it back to you fifty percent" because they got caught not giving us at all. So I compliment the audit, and I think it's good that we have an audit on our self-funded insurance plan, the employees, insurance committee. I didn't hear one complaint from them. So I stand by Mr. Lehman's statement, too. We need to move on. And the sad part is that us, mutual pulled out. We didn't. And every company has a right to bring in their own PPO. Seven years ago, we didn't know who the PPO was, and we didn't know how good they were gonna do. But when we were hesitant to go self-funded in two thousand and one, and I was hesitant, and we went self-funded, and back from here on out, we've been in the black, Mr. Gonzalez, correct? So I have to stand by the consultant because they did do the job. It was a six-one vote to bring them in. I remember when they came in at fifty, we said, "No." Came at thirty-three, we said, "No." I mean, it was three-three vote, three-four last time, and then six-one. So I'm gonna stand with the recommendation, and I like the concrete contract. I think that, and I wanna continue doing that to every insurance vendor that comes in here from here on out on TPA, to provide all those type of services. I compliment AAG on that. But we continue that from here on out with that type of contract. Thank you.
Okay, what I'll do now is, Mr. Cortez, I'll open the floor for a motion. We're on item ten.
So does this mean that we're not gonna be able to get anything verified at all, Mr. Gonzalez? I mean, at least, I mean, they're here. I don't see what the harm would be in just asking them if they would... I know I'm asking you, Dr. Scuado. Sorry. I don't see what the harm would be in just asking if they would stand by the discount.
We'll ask again. That question's been asked numerous times. We'll ask again, Mr. Kalunga.
Before calling for a motion, I just wanted to express my point of view that I had the same concerns originally on what Mr. Cortez had brought up. Have listened to legal's explanation on the safeguards in the contract are what concerned me, that they be in place as we move forward to a contract. So I'm satisfied that the safeguards will be there to guarantee that performance as promised by the TPA.
Mr. Lehman? I mean, we have representatives from AAG?
Yeah, I'm gonna call them as soon as you're done. Okay. What I'd like to do, well, not the, actually, the consultant. I'd like to call the consultant if they are here. Oh, the consultant's not here, okay. Okay, well, a representative from the company in question?
Is the PPO in question or the AAG? I guess they're... Okay.
Great. Uh, that was my question.
Gentlemen, please. I think we have, uh, we might have new questions. I don't know. These questions are all have been asked numerous times, but...
If I may, Doctor Scovelo.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Please, I, I would not like for them to do a new presentation. I think that would be out of the realm of this agenda item. I think that if the chair or any member of the board went to ask any specific question that was already brought up, then they can't ask a specific question. To go through a total presentation again would be, would not be something that I would encourage this board to do. Once again, it's not my agenda item and just giving you advice as your superintendent.
Gentlemen, I'm gonna let Mr. Cortez ask his question. And then if you please identify yourself with the record and answer his question. Mr. Cortez?
Uh, if, if you could identify yourself, I, I... Okay. Clay Timmons, uh, Executive Vice President of Business Development for HealthSmart, the PPO Network. Mr. Timmons, first, uh, of all, I'd like to, uh, thank you for, for being here and taking the initiative that, uh, for being here on behalf of your employer. Uh, you guys did an outstanding job with, uh, with your presentation. And, you know, I think you, you, that saying from that movie, you had us at hello, well, you had us at flu shots. And, 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 uh, I had simply one concern. I've been trying to get an answer to one concern. And I'm hoping that you heard me ask it enough times that, that you can just kinda give it to us straight so that we can, like Mr. Powers said, move past this. Because, uh, we, we need to, uh, move past this stage already.
I'll, I'll try to keep this brief. I know what we're trying to get to. And, and I am prepared to answer your question today and address those directly. Um, the, the concern, just to recap and make sure I'm on the same page, is, um, to, to, you guys wanted verification that the contracts that were renegotiated for Brownsville Independent School District were fully executed and ready and available for you for an October one effective date. And, um, I know I represented discounts that will be improved above and beyond on two out of your three top hospitals. Uh, I believe by one of the board members, there was an initial calculation of that, uh, as to what that would equate to. Um, I, I took last year's utilization of those discounts. And, and in order to come up with a real accurate figure, I took your actual utilization, took the actual contract, backed into what that would equate to in overall net savings, understanding full well that you guys have a huge fiduciary responsibility over this health plan. Uh, those savings equated to one point four million, basically one million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars based on last year's utilization. Pretty significant. Those are in addition to the savings that will already be generated based on the analysis that you saw. HealthSmart came out on top of that. These will be savings in addition to that. Mr. Cortez, to address your concern directly, um, I did actually bring copies of the contracts themselves. Um, I'll be happy to show you the signature pages of those contracts with the effective dates so that you guys can see that they are available and that they are fully executed, uh, and ready to go. Beyond all of that, uh, if you need to verify anything beyond what I'm doing today, um, there is a lady that will be available for Superintendent Gonzalez, uh, named Brittany Pallison, who is the Vice President of Managed Care over the Valley Regional Hospital. Uh, she'll be happy to verify that these contracts are executed. Uh, they were, they were given to HealthSmart and awarded ultimately to BISD and that the, um, net savings are what they, as I state. Um, at this time, I'll be happy to present the signature pages of those contracts for verification by the board.
Uh... Mr. Cortez, do you wanna see it? Uh, or Mr. Timmons, right?
Yes.
Uh, so was, was that a yes to, to my question?
It was a long yes, but it was a yes.
Was it a long yes?
It was a long yes that, that they are fully executed and are with me today.
Thank you.
I have one question for Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Lehman.
I'm sorry. I, I think I'm alluding to Mr. Cortez. I think he's begging the question, are the flu shots also for us too or no?
Absolutely. Given the nature of the valley, I'll, uh, I'll let you guys address that direction.
Flu shots are not for us, right?
You're not an employee.
Mr. Gonzalez?
I, I just like, per, per, per path, did you get the name? Was it Brittany who?
Pallison.
Pallison, okay.
She, she is out of Houston. I'll be happy to provide her contact information.
My secretary, phone number, whatever.
Okay.
And she's available to administration, correct?
Excuse me?
She's available to administration, correct?
Yes. I, I represented that the person who would make the phone call would be Superintendent Gonzalez.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Cortez, do I have a motion?
Doctor, I, I wish we would've had this Friday before noon. And, and like I indicated a moment ago, I would've loved to have pulled this item prior to then. Uh, it wasn't until, uh, I guess yesterday, the email that, that I received information saying that they would provide, uh, uh, signature pages, but still, it wasn't a yes to, will guarantee the discounts. So, uh, I'm more than, than, than satisfied with them being here and on the record and saying that they will guarantee the discounts as stated. And at this time, I'd, I'd like to just pull the item altogether.
Well, you can't pull it, but if that's a long no, that you don't have a motion? Do I have a motion? If I do not have a motion, then the item dies.
That's a good one.
Moving on to item thirteen. Uh, recommend to renew third-party administrative services, TPA, for the BISD Self-Inured Workers' Compensation Plan to TriStar Risk Management Services, uh, provided such district's needs and funding. Uh, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. I didn't get a chance to rescind this. No, I'm just kidding. I just wanted to, uh, make sure that, um, that in reviewing the, uh, professional services for attorneys, uh, one of the, uh, presenters, uh, did allude to a, the Labor Code five oh four, uh, concerning workers' compensation healthcare network and how it applies to workman's compensation. So I wanna make sure that we look into that and that is a component of, uh, possibly the workman's compensation. I know it's new and, and I just wanna make sure that administration is aware of that component in the law. Uh, that was, I think, uh, implemented back in two thousand and five or adopted in two thousand and five. Okay?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thanks, Doctor Scovelo. I'm on the board. I'm not familiar, as I should be, because I'm not an attorney concerning the law you're talking about. But I am familiar because I learned also from the attorneys that presented concerning that. But once you select an attorney tonight, I will post that question and maybe they can do a complete presentation to the entire board concerning that particular issue, concerning networking for, network of doctors for that. I think that's what it is, a network of doctors for workman's comp.
Well, let me just read real briefly, five oh four point oh five three.
I knew you had it in your computer. For some reason, I knew you'd have that.
A political subdivision that self-insures either individually or collectively shall provide workers' compensation medical benefits to the injured employees of the political subdivision through a workers' compensation healthcare network certified under chapter thirteen oh five of the insurance code if the governing body of the political subdivision determines that provisions of those benefits through a network is available to the employees and practical for the political subdivision. And as a, uh, added-on component, a political subdivision may enter, enter, enter local agreements and, and other agreements with other political subdivisions to establish or contract with network under this section. So we can even make it better by bringing in other governmental entities such as the city of Brownsville, uh, the port and so forth. So this is something we need to look into, probably reduce our, our claims. Anyway, that, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Mr. Colunga?
Uh, yes, uh, on the, um, uh, the, the years of TriStar management, um, uh, how many years is the contract run so far?
Uh, Mr. Colunga, if, if I may, Doctor Scovelo, members of the board, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Sanchez, that this, we had an option for three, two, up to three years to extend every year. We would be, this would be the first extension, which would be the second year of the contract. So we have up to three. The reason we bring it up so early, and it's really early, is because, like I told you all before, I have a ninety-day lead time if you're not going to renew it so I can go out for bids. Otherwise, I'm caught between the rock and the hard place. So if you're happy, we're happy. I talked to Mr. Sanchez. He was the one that put this agenda item on for me. He brought it up to me. We discussed it. I said, are we happy with TriStar? He said, yes, we are very happy with TriStar. I said, well, let's put it on then.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, I just, uh, as a follow-up, uh, I want, I would like a, a sheet, a running total as to where our workman's comp is to date.
If I can, that can be provided.
That's, that's not a problem. Mr. Sanchez will provide that for you.
What's in our balance now? What do we have now in savings? Do you have an idea, Russel?
I guess I can have it now.
I will provide you with that. I, I hate for Mr. Sanchez to bring that up off of the head. There was no backup, so...
Okay, next.
Any other questions or comments from the board? If not, I hear a motion to approve item thirteen.
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Lehman, second by Mr. Powers. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item fourteen. Recommend to renew excess insurance for the BISD Self-Inured Workers' Compensation Plan to Chovia Insurance Services Midwest Employers Casualty Company. Services to be provided subject to district's needs and funding. Uh, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. Along the lines of Labor Code five oh four oh five three, allowing us to do that. Uh, we're going into a, uh, entering into a workers' compensation healthcare network if it would allow, uh, possibly even continued savings, uh, if we are, if we reduce our, our, our claim status. But my question here, and I apologize, I'm getting a sore throat, um, that we are renewing the, uh, the policy or the insurance, uh, and we have an increase and that is in the original contract that we signed, right? Agreement? Because by law, can we do that?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Hmm, I would throw that to Mr. Sanchez. He's been the one that's been working with this. I, I, I really don't remember.
Mr. Gonzalez, uh, if I, repeat your question, sir. Okay. Uh, the way I read this, this is a renewal.
Right.
So we're not, we didn't go out for our piece. So there is language in the first contract, or last year's contract, that allows for this increase.
Eight, three?
Well, I, I see there's a twenty-four thousand dollar, one hundred and eighteen dollar increase. That's the way I understand it.
We're on item fourteen.
I understand.
We, we are on fourteen, huh?
Yes.
And you scared me.
Maybe, maybe answer that by, I have a cor- I have a correspondence, uh, dated, uh, this summer when we first mentioned it. And I think we had a, an insurance meeting and we talked a little bit about it. And from one of the representatives, uh, from this particular Wacovia Insurance Services, Ann Street, uh, and says something to the effect, I talked with your underwriter. She confirmed to us that the rates have, have not changed this year and that it's not, they're not anticipating any increase in general. However, pricing is always based on the current estimated payroll. So because our, you know, we gave raises and so the gross payroll goes up. So the, the, the basic fee is the same, but because the, we have more employees, higher gross payroll, so naturally, we will see an increase. But I guess, I guess if you said the per-unit cost, it's not gonna change, kinda.
That's the way to say it right there. But my question is, the language is clear on the contract? Yeah, as far as allowing that. I, I'm just saying that. I don't know, Mr. President. I don't know. I'm not quite sure I understand your question.
If, if I may, I, I think what, what he's asking is, the, 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 the per-unit stays the same, which it has. The only reason that the total cost has gone up is because we have more employees and we gave very good pay raises. So therefore, it kicks in because we have better pay raises and more employees. But the unit rate remains the same. The question is, is this allowed in the contract? It would almost have to be allowed in the contract to tie a vendor's hands in saying, you're stuck with the number of employees that we have and the pay that we have for the next two years. Would, uh, nobody would sign that kind of contract.
I just bring this question because ING, and maybe I'm comparing apples to pears, but on the ING and the medical, it was guaranteed rate. And this is...
And this is a guaranteed rate per unit?
As long as it's allowed in the contract. That's my only concern.
I will make sure Mr. Sedana re-views the contract.
Otherwise, we would be in violation, I would feel. Okay. And then if we're not in...
Hopefully.
Well...
Depends.
Well, I mean, I'll vote on that.
The attorney for the district will do that.
Yeah, as long as it's in...
It's permissible.
Within eight hours.
Good one, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Colunga. Within eight hours.
Mr. Colunga, do you have a comment or question?
I'll comment tomorrow morning. You'll have it.
Yes, uh, just, uh, the same question as thirteen, uh, how many years with, uh, Wacovia that we, uh, had a contract?
Same thing. We, we, we approved them last year. This would be the first year of renewal. And if we wanted to, we could go even one more year after that.
Thank you.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President. Uh, we did ask that question last year. And I know I brought it up because of the premiums. They said guaranteed premiums, but it was guaranteed in unit. Because our employees, and we've gone from two eighty to over three hundred million now in payroll. So there's nothing you can do about it.
Well, as long as it's in the contract, certainly.
It's pretty much in the contract. Pretty sure.
Questions or comments? If not, I have a motion to approve item fourteen. Motion by Mr. Cortez, second by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item sixteen. Uh, consideration, discussion and possible action on board attorney.
Mr. President? Where are you going?
For the record, Mr. Sedana has excused himself from one of the many hot seats that we have up here. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, any comments, sir? I would like to open the floor to...
All right. I, I will make a comment. This, this is, this is one that, uh, any board member can make a motion in concerning who they want as their attorney. Or you can open it up to discussion all over again. It's up to you.
Right.
President?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Powers? I, I'm ready to make the motion, if you like.
Okay, just, uh, well, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Uh, I move to accept a contract with Walsh, Anderson, Brown, Sloss, Aldrich, PC.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Powers, seconded by Mrs. Galvan. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to, uh, I don't...
Subject, subject to a contract.
I don't, uh, I remember...
Who, who did you review that contract, Mr. President? Walsh, Anderson, no.
Uh, you can ask your counsel?
Now, 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 now it comes to me. Uh, what we'll do is...
Gonzalez?
You have approved a, the selection of the most qualified firm, which will allow us to continue working with this firm on a reg- on a almost day-to-day basis. On the eighteenth, I will have to bring back an agenda item to approve the fees. That is a requirement that we do in the process. The process says you will select the most qualified. You cannot base that qualifications on price. If we come back and they submit their prices, and that'll be up to Mr. Sanchez and myself and they have administration to negotiate that price that we think we can recommend to the board. And then you can approve it. And if not, you make another motion to select the next best qualified if you don't like the price they give.
Mr. Lehman?
And, uh, through the years since I've been here, since two thousand and one, I've never seen a contract that had a way out, but a thirty-day. And I know Mr. Um, uh, one of the past board members, uh, what's the policeman? Randy Dunn. He, he's the one that proposed the, uh, thirty-day or sixty-day. So there, there should be a, a component there and, and plus language that exercises that. Not, not, not that I'm putting pressure on the counselor, but... It has to be performance.
Yeah, uh, Doctor Scovelo, I'm on the board. Our job from administrative point of view is to work with a representative of Walsh, Anderson, to be able to secure a contract that we think would be reasonable to the district and we'll present it to them.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the board? Well, congratulations to Walsh, Anderson, uh, and associates. You know, I would say this, independent of which firm we, was selected. But one thing that I do wanna be a little more frugal in and a little more scrupulous is in monitoring the attorney fees. Uh, and I, you know, again, I would have said that no matter who would've been hired tonight. But I, I do wanna be more, more scrupulous in, in, uh, in monitoring the attorney fees. Um, moving on to item eighteen. Recommend approval to appoint a delegate and an alternate to two thousand and seven Tasby Joint Annual Convention in Dallas on Saturday, September twenty-ninth, two thousand and seven. I will open the floor for either a discussion or a recommendation, Mr. Powers.
Uh, Mr. President, I feel that, uh, since Mr. Cortez is...
Oh, yeah.
Doing his hard work and agenda.
Oh, yeah.
I'd nominate him to be the delegate. I've been here four or five times. I think it's your turn.
I, I would like to have him there early, yeah.
Mr. Cortez, do you, do you accept this nomination?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll close the floor for a nomination for delegate. Uh, the nomination has been by Mr. Powers to appoint Mr. Cortez. He has accepted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lehman. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? The motion passes six to one with Mrs. Galvan abstaining.
Mrs. Galvan, he has to be there early, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. And take, uh, detailed notes...
Yes, sir.
To, to pass out to the board, like a report.
And you do get no...
Typed out, typed out.
And have a thorough, uh, presentation like Mr. Otis has done in the past.
Exactly.
President.
Exactly.
And also, he doesn't understand, you get no continuing education credit.
It's something that you do...
Unless they've changed it.
Okay. Well, that, uh, takes care of the delegate. Uh, now an alternate. I'll open the floor for nomination for an alternate.
Mr. Cortez.
Well, no, you can't do that twice.
Aguilar? Hey, I'm not gonna be here.
Yeah. Any, uh, any nominations for an alternate for two thousand and seven Tasby Convention in Dallas?
You can put me in alternate.
Okay, Mr. Powers has, I guess, nominated himself, kinda sort of. Okay, Mr. Lehman? Okay, Mr. Layman nominates Mr. Powers. Uh, I'll, I'll second that motion, Mr. Powers. I accept it. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye. He needs to be in there.
Right. Uh, was that unanimous? All in favor?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, the motion does-
I mean, they can travel together.
The mo- they can travel together, you know, sit, sit together and do a little bonding and, anyway, uh, that was item eighteen. Uh, we now move on to item ten, closed meeting as pursuant to tax government code, section five five one point zero seven one at sec. The board now goes to closed session. The board reconvened after closed session. Moving on to item number forty-three. Uh, recommend approval to propose termination discharge of a term contract, uh, contract employee for good cause, SS. Uh, do I have a motion? Motion to approve item, uh, forty-three?
I move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Galvano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kalunga. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Uh, okay.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion passes, uh, five to two with Mr. Powers and Mr. Aguilar, uh, voting against. Moving on to item, okay, um, forty-five, consultation with attorney regarding pending threatened litigation matters. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to pay medical claim of classified employee RO to the Brownsville Doctors' Hospital in the amount of fifty thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I have a motion by Mr. Cortez. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Powers. All in favor, raise your right hand?
Aye.
Mo- uh, oppose. Motion passes six to one with Mrs. Galvano opposing. Uh, any other motions on legal? If not, we move on to item eleven, announcements. Uh, the next scheduled board meeting, the board trustees, is on Tuesday, September eighteenth, two thousand and seven, here at the Administration Building at five thirty PM. Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements?
Yes, Dr. Scovio, thank you very much. I, I, I did put a, uh, a press release that, uh, if you go to the news, will be aired tonight. Uh, I wanna extend my condolences to the parents of the student, the seventh grade student that passed away. Uh, I think the whole board extends their, their best wishes and, and I know I do. It, it's a grave loss to lose a student from Lucio Middle School, but, uh, it's very unfortunate. But my, my best goes to the family. My deepest condolences to the family. Uh, I don't know if any board member wants to say anything to the behalf of that, but we are working on, on, on helping the family out. We are providing counseling for the students that are there at Lucio, and it's, uh, an unfortunate incident.
Our condolences to the family. Um, if nothing else, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Aguilar. If you're ready, raise your right hand?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.